Okay, okay, this is 7:19 and this is June night. And this is the planning board meeting at the Carver Middle School and the high school auditorium. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I just want to start out that a lot has happened since our last planning board meeting and we have a new member who isn't here tonight that was elected, John Gasky, but he's not with us tonight. We also have two of our members that have been chosen for the select board and they are with us here tonight. So I guess I'll just have Jim speak about, Jim Walsh, if you could just speak about the members of the board because usually we do a reorganization after the election, but things are still a little bit up in the air, especially with our new member not being here tonight. So we're just going to hold off on the reorganization this week.
So we have a, so one of the things we anticipated was two members being elected to the select board and that actually came true. So we saw legal opinion from KP Law or legal revisers and essentially because of, there's a general bylaw, section 2.28 kind of prohibits members of the select board from serving on any other board of mission. And so our opinion more or less boils down to is that if the planning board special permit is expected to wrap up quickly, Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Bogart may wish to not, consider not being sworn into the select board and finish up the current special permit before the planning board, provided that such action does not interfere with the business of the select board, including preparations for the June 29, 2020 in hotel meeting. Conversely, that can withdraw and start anew with the four present members of the planning board. So at this point, we have an opinion that Ms. Bogart and Mr. Hoffman can participate in this meeting and then after this meeting, they would have to resign from the planning board and then be sworn in with the Board of Selectmen.
All right, so we're happy to have Jen and Jim here tonight to help us finish this public hearing. So we're going to continue, we have a public hearing that we have continued to this evening and it was continued from May 26, 2020. It's on the application of Eric Pontiff requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to section 2230, 2330, 4341, or 4344 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located off Forest Street on assessors map 49, apostle 62 dash six in Carver, Mass. to construct two commercial buildings. Building number one is a 7,490 square foot and is to be leased to Nutrient Ag Solutions. And building two is a 7,200 square foot and will be a Craftsman-Traysman building in the general business district. And because of what's been going on with the Zoom meetings, for every meeting that we've had, every public hearing that we've had on this, we've mailed out the abuddies, notices to the abuddies, whether this would be a Zoom meeting or whether it would be as tonight, we're meeting in the, in the, in the high school. So every time we've had a meeting, the abuddies have been notified. And the abuddies could participate by emailing in questions and they could also call in.
Just basically to, you know, disuade some of the pocket around it, but the original plan obviously has all of it. I can bring that to the June 23 meeting.
Yeah.
I didn't want to interrupt, but when you guys are ready, if you want me to kind of...
Yeah, no, go ahead, please.
Oh, okay.
I think we're ready.
That's fine. So the building, I was listening to the...
When we did our Zoom meetings, so, and usually we just mail out to the abuddies one notice at the time of a public hearing. And so we've kind of done it every single time just because of the COVID crisis and the way we've been having to hold our public hearings. We've, we're happy to have this in the auditorium tonight so people can actually participate. So I want to say that since our last Zoom meeting that we had, we did have a site visit and most of the board members were there. We did walk the site and, and saw what was out there. So, so I don't, if the, if the, Mr. Pontiff and the engineers with him would like to, anything further to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law in Plymouth, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Pontiff. We've got our civil engineer, Mark Flaherty of Flaherty &amp; Stefani here with us as well. Yeah, I mean, we're mostly here in a responsive posture to field any questions, you know, this is our third appearance for the board. We had an April hearing, unfortunately, it wasn't a quorum for, and then we met again via Zoom a second time on May 26th. Thought that was a productive hearing. We have addressed in the interim all of the few consultants' comments and did our best to field the questions from the board on May 26th. And as you know, we have a site visit, which I understand went well, at least from our perspective, and we're here again tonight. So our hope is that we can wrap this up, you know, certainly field any further questions. I won't rehash what's already been said. You know, we're relocating the existing retail facility from a residential location to a commercial district and, you know, Mark's here fielding any questions, I think. Other than that, I offer my congratulations to Ms. Bogart, Mr. Hoffman for being appointed to the select board, elected to the select board. That's really it. I'll just field questions and...
Thank you. I, yeah, I just kind of want to go over this a bit because, and I will go out to the public because I see that there is a neighbor out here. But we, let's see, I know that there were questions about the safety of the project and if you could just, and so there was steel floors that were going to be in the AG building and with six inch steel sideboards that go up on the sides in case there's a spill. And I was just reading through the information just to reacquaint myself with the project this afternoon, but there's also flipboards that flip up at the entrances of the doors and of the bays. So when the building is locked up or if there's an emergency, those, those flipboards do flip up to contain anything that would be spilled in the building. Now, and this is also in the AG building, but then there's going to be three bays that are rented out of the, the building out back, which is the Craftsman-Traysman building.
Yes, sir.
And those three bays that are going to be rented by AG are also going to have the steel floors and the sideboards and the flip up entrances.
Correct, identical safety measure, yep.
Okay. And now there was also safety measures that were done on the outside of the building as far as the catch basins were concerned. If you could just explain that a little bit more.
Good evening, Mark Flaherty from Plymouth, civil engineer on the project. Thanks for joining us at the site walk. It was pretty, a good situation and got the members to be a little more familiar with the overall site. So this is, this is Forest Street and this is the front building. I call it the east building and this is the west building right through here. The water presently on site comes down to this bowl right through here. So for the most part, the water will continue to go down to this bowl. We have a large subsurface drainage system where the drainage water would come and be infiltrated into the ground. Looks very similar to many other sites. But in this situation, we have an emergency valve that if there was ever a type of a spill or any type of oil or anything that got into the parking lot, there's a valve over here that would shut down, kind of a large valve that would shut down before any water would enter into the infiltration system. The staff of Nutrient AG as well as the staff of the, of the two additional bays out here will be familiar with the operation of this emergency valve. So it was suggested to us by the, by Kevin Fogg of the Board of Health during a pre-admission, pre-submission type of project that this would be a good idea. We looked into it, we came up with the right design. Fuss and O'Neil took a look at it and were satisfied with the overall valve and the emergency system. Fuss and O'Neil took a look at the overall site from a Carver zoning bylaw standpoint and we have met with all the comments associated that Fuss and O'Neil had come up with and they're satisfied with it. We've met with the fire protection chief, Chief Boyle during the whole process. We've, we explained what was coming here. Jesse Boyle is familiar with Nutrient AG Solutions, the overall emergency report that they have on board. If, if the project gets approved and Nutrient AG comes to this site, that emergency report will be updated so that there's a good coordination between the fire department and Nutrient AG as well as if there's any other people who rent out the bays, that would be under the building inspector's guidance of what, what would be an allowed use for those two bays in this commercial zone. So that's a rough summary from my standpoint, Mr. Chairman, about what the emergency situation's going to be. And yes, there's wells. There was a, there was a question that, that the neighbor asked about the groundwater direction. We looked into the available USGS reports. There was a nice report that was done in the 1990s about a regional groundwater flow. There was a series of monitoring wells put out, both the Plymouth and the Carver area to establish this groundwater flow map that I, I made a copy of a portion of it. We've used that extensively on other projects and it's worked pretty well. Other engineers have also used that. So the direction of the groundwater is moving towards Forest Street, towards Route 58, towards Money Pond, and towards the landfill across the street. So moving away from the residential sector is what I'm trying to say. So I don't know if that goes along with it, with the containment system that was set up and designed by Mr. Pontiff's fire protection engineers out of Norwell, Mass. that we described previously. They came up with the overall containment system. So with that and with the overall groundwater direction, I'm hoping that the neighbor might be satisfied that, you know, we have looked into it. We have worked with the Board of Health, we have worked with the fire department and I think these, these folks are satisfied. Fuss and O'Neil is satisfied and we hope the planning board in its deliberations will also be satisfied. Thank you.
And the engineering company that, that you had look at the building for fire protection, but they came up with the floor system?
That's correct, yes. That was Howe Engineers. They, they call it a spill containment. If I just read a small paragraph from the report. "The project as provided will, will have a spill containment system, but this is not for a building or fire code related requirements. As the building is not considered a Group H high hazard, spill containment is not required. As noted above, the building will be equipped with a six inch high steel containment barrier all around the interior. In any door openings, there will be a gate system that drops down to make the containment continuous in the event of a spill occurring in the building." So that was, that was set up and that was signed by a, his name was Jeffrey Mason. The name of their company is called Howe Engineers out of Norwell, Mass.
Now, now the types of chemicals that are used here, they're used in the cranberry business mostly?
That's correct, yes.
So, so this is a, a company off of Plymouth Street that's, how long has this agway been on Plymouth Street?
I don't know, maybe Mr. Pontiff might be able to.
I think it was late 70s, early 80s.
They, have they had any spills or anything on record? Okay, so they've never had any, any problems?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a comment, I think, to reiterate what I said last time. I went through the hazmat inventory that Howe Engineers, the independent code consultant provided for my own benefit. I didn't want to be up there saying, oh, nothing bad, guys, don't worry, you know? And, you know, I'm typing in, I mean, hard to decipher what have these things even meant to a layperson, but, you know, they boiled down to, as far as I could tell, fertilizer, fungicide, pesticide, and disease control products. They're all agricultural products, you know, and, and again, as, as Mr. Flaherty noted, you know, none of this is required by code. This is not considered a high hazard occupancy under the code, but, you know, Ag Solutions and Mr. Pontiff are happy to do it and want to be good corporate citizens.
So, so these are materials that are sprayed over the bogs in, in Carver?
And you eat, and your products are eaten?
So we eat, and people live near the bogs and we also eat the cranberries that are sprayed with these, what the, the materials that have, that are used in these buildings?
Yes, sir, these are all food. I mean, I don't know if you'd call them technically food safe, but to a layperson, I'd consider them food safe.
Mr. Chairman, I can just add one, one item. This inventory of Nutrient AG chemicals that they, they sell, this is on, this is on board with the fire department. Fire department has this inventory list and they are familiar with, with these chemicals. So if there's ever a situation there, they know exactly what chemicals Nutrient AG Solutions is using.
Okay. And these are the same ones that are, that are being stored and sold at the, at the current address?
That's correct, yes.
There's nothing new? Any other new materials that are being added from the old, old building to this, this building here that you know of?
No, no, no change in their inventory lists. I think very similar to what they're doing currently.
Now, now the old building...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Well, when I've done, I'll let, I'll give you, is, in the old building, is there any kind of containment or anything?
They have the same system there.
Oh, they do have the same system?
Yeah, so it wasn't required by code, but their corporate strategy was, you know, their corporate responsibility required them to do it. They, they chose to do it, so they did the six inch steel around the base of the building. And as you mentioned earlier, at any door openings, there's a gate system that drops down that makes that continuous. So they haven't had any spills there. You know, as we talked about before, these are full bags of fertilizer or other chemicals in closed containers. There's no mixing or dividing up. If anything, we paint the picture of a pallet of fertilizer coming in with 48 bags on it. Somebody comes and buys 20 of them, they take 20 of the bags and the balance is still on the pallet. There'd never be anything being mixed in a tank or products being set up to go out to an agricultural site from there, other than the fact that they're all packaged. So it's not like you're mixing up a tank spray that's then going to be applied to a cranberry bog.
All right, I think, and I know we did, we did visit the site. You know, a question was about the plantings and the, what we saw out there and I thought they were quite adequate. But we did look at the rear property line and we found out as we were going through the woods there that the rear property line is really quite well vegetated with evergreen trees that are 20 feet plus in height. So I know we discussed there was one portion of that back line, the left, at the left rear property line. Has anybody, have you considered what you may do out there just to supplement those, those evergreen trees that are out there now?
We have a landscaping plan that is in front of you that really has a double row of arborvitae. They'll, they will be installed and if there is any issues that we, you know, that, A, Mr. Building Inspector, you are in charge of reviewing the site with Fuss and O'Neil. If there's a situation where these arborvitae, these big 20-foot grain are adequate, we will go to the building inspector and says, you know, there is, you know, even though we had a landscaping plan approved by the planning board and in this area where there was a little weak where the arborvitae have come down in storms, we're going to plant those double, double rows that are staggered, arborvitae. But there's almost no sense putting the arborvitae back where there's already a 20-foot high. So whether or not we come back to the planning board, whether the building inspector tells us to informally come in front of you to describe what we're doing and not doing, we have to do that.
All right, I guess that is, those are the questions that I had. Kevin, did you say you had?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So, and you just spoke about it. So when we went out there and took a look at it, that is absolutely wonderful and I'm thinking and hoping that the board is with me on this. It would be nice if we could insist on maybe instead of wasting, putting the, a second hedge, that maybe you could, you know, look into the larger trees and supplement that area so it's consistent with what's already there, you know, so we're not wasting trees by just being thrown. I mean, I'm a landscaper, the first thing I want to do is plant something, but it's redundant, planting trees on top of trees, but it might be a better idea to consider larger, fuller trees, you know?
Elsewhere.
I'm not asking for like an enormous expense, you know? I don't expect, you know, 40-foot trees to be put up there, but some, something that would be very sufficient for what's out there already, the same amount of money used, but now used in a different place.
That sounds, that sounds good.
You know, towards the landscaping. Do you guys think that that's a decent idea?
Can you just say that in the back there, those large trees from some houses and just continue having the single row of large trees?
I would like to see something in that area that we can add to it to almost make it complete without being redundant and putting trees in the area that is beautiful, lush, and doing very well. And it's, and we talked about this a little bit, there was a tree that was a concern to me that's, that is probably the reason why that tree line is not as full as it is. So, you know, that might be something that has to be taken into consideration. It's shading a significant apartment. I mean, you can, you were out there, right?
Yeah, we talked about it.
I mean, that was probably one of the most beautiful established hedges I've ever seen, you know? Thick, I mean, it would have worked, it would have worked on that bog. On what was that street? The one with the octagon house in it? Well, you know, Rebuildix old house, Perry? Yeah, but that, we could have used one there. So anyways, if there's a way to make that, you know, in the writing, Jim, or, and you guys are along with that, I think that's a good thing. And I did have a second question. I think the, the public should be aware of what's being stored in there. That way there, there's not going to be any questions of them doing anything wrong and, you know, I think if it's open to the public to know, I mean, I, I use, I use the facility so I don't know if this is unethical, but I mean, I'm a landscaper, so I go in and there, I'll grab things, you know? I, I know the Ute lease. So, you know, I just think if the public was aware of exactly what they're, what they're using in there and they, I don't know, they have the opportunity to look at that information, then, you know, you're in a good place not to be concerned.
So I think it's open to the public, I think. Yeah, so annually, they file an inventory list with the fire department. So are you thinking something beyond that?
As does every pesticide company. So that's what I'm thinking, if the public, maybe if the public was aware of that, that way there, they can see for themselves, this is what's being used, it's, you know what I mean? I don't think there's such a thing as a herbicide and a pesticide that isn't bad for us. I'm sorry, you know, that's just my personal opinion. But if the public were aware of that, I think you wouldn't have so many questions, so many concerns, people, you know, worried that there's going to be backflow problems or chemical spills, because I, I know there's, there's very few chemicals in there, you know? A lot of it is for the most part, powders and, you know, setup, maybe you have to do the spray tanks and stuff like that. So anyways, that was my other issue.
And those records are, when you file with the fire department, I mean, those records would be available to the public, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's correct. So they're required annually to file that inventory list for, you know, with the fire department. Jesse Boyle's the contact for that and they've done it annually as well as an emergency plan.
So I think that's good on behalf of the public, being able to access that.
Sure, yeah.
Puts them at peace. I mean, like I said, I use, I use the business myself.
And I believe we included an inventory, I mean, as of January 8, 2020, with the special permit submission, so that's public record also.
These are public records.
Yeah, for what it's worth, there's a current...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim.
I posted all the documents to the planning board website so that inventory should be posted.
Okay, so it is on the website and it has been on the website for, for several weeks now that we've been having the public here for this.
Right.
Jen, do you have any, anything to add?
Something that has struck a nerve since then is the, the back building with the five bays and the five parking spaces. That just doesn't seem like enough for that. You've got five, I mean, that's if they're one per employee and then is no one going to go back there? Like, I understand they use the one per two employees thing, which still makes no sense. Two people are going to work, how do they share a spot?
So if I can respond to that?
Yeah. Well, like literally, what are they doing?
So this is all going to be paved and these areas are going to be striped. So each bay owner would park here. It would also have this, this hashed area available to it if there was a car to be parked or left open. So if the planning board wanted us to switch out this hashed area and make it a parking space, we can do that. Mr. Walsh called me today, he had a consultation with the building inspector. We explained what the hashed areas were and what the hashed areas could be used for in the future, almost instead of five parking spaces, it really would be 10 plus parking spaces if they were become available. So I don't know if that answers your concern. We're happy to restripe in a different manner so that there'd be more parking spaces out front, but that's what we had in mind.
The other thing that's important to note about that site plan is if we wanted to stripe that whole area up with additional parking, you know, we could come up with 25, 30 spaces. But I think the logistics and the reality of the way the businesses are going to use it is that those spaces are adequate so that if we started striping more spaces, we would be doing a disservice to the businesses and how they're, you know, going to set up. So I think if you look at the amount of pavement there, there's quite a bit of area as well as, you know, we widened that entrance up, the requirement was 24, we went to 30. So if there was any overflow, there's all this area along here too for parking in this area. So you could do parallel parking along there as well. But I think we didn't want to overstripe it to have a bunch of odd people, you know, like let's say one car parked way over there and one over here and there were empty spots in between, it just wouldn't work logistically.
But that's five bays and three bays are going to be used for storage.
Correct.
So you're only going to have two.
But is that in perpetuity? Like the, we don't know who is going to rent the other two. It might be a business where you'd have people coming. The striped portions between the spaces, was there a purpose for that, that they were kind of marked off as not spaces?
Well, there could be an overhead door, Jen. And if there's an overhead door, you wouldn't want to have a car parked right in front of the overhead door. That was, that was my thought process when I, when I hashed that area.
Hatch, I think that's important.
Yeah.
So I think hatch is important because I might, I was going to ask Mr. Chairman if I could ask that. The public probably doesn't understand hatch, but it sounds like you're telling us that in theory, making the hatch, you are establishing 10 parking spaces without having to stripe it.
That's correct.
How would someone know they could park there? Because if I go into parking lot and I see hatch marks or striped things, I'm not going to know that I'm allowed to. I'm going to think, do not park there.
Being a farmer, I think that's to make chickens.
I think I can respond. I mean, I think that it's a great question and I think the answer is that sort of commercial requirements are going to dictate what's available for parking. So to use your example, if we've got three storage units out of five there, there's not much parking, but if those were to change in the future, we'd probably have a hard time getting... getting a tenant in there who was operating, you know, a children's clothing store, I mean, to pick a bizarre example, you know, they wouldn't want to be there without adequate parking and that would probably dictate a change, we'd probably back to the board to alter the plans if we had to bring someone else in. That, that's how I think practically would play out, if that's helpful.
I'm just concerned, but five bays, five spaces, doesn't seem like a lot. And in the calculations, I saw it was one per, per two employees, but in, I even believe in the first building and then comparable projects, they would take the square footage, one of them that was near identical, took the square footage and used 75% of the square footage as a one per two employee and then 25% of the square footage was regulated as office space. And then the parking requirement for that part was added to it. So it yielded more spaces in that, but it, I mean, you're going to, if, down on Tremont Street, you're going to walk in, there's going to be a desk, some of these places are going to have offices. So it just allotted for more spaces in a more realistic way. They took some storage, some retail or office and combined it.
So is there enough space for just customers that are coming in for this business in particular?
Right, like just the, the way that other projects were prepared, there, there still weren't one space, one employee and retail or, and a customer, but there, I'm just concerned this, this is not.
So maybe the planning board can give me some guidance and we can strike, get rid of the hatched areas and stripe them all with parking space, regular 10-foot stalls and put them right across and just get rid of the hatch. I mean, it's making, certainly it's not going to cost Mr. Pontiff at all, it's, you know, and if someone wants to park there and has garage doors, then they're just going to have to kind of police and says, you know, put some cones out, I just don't park there in front of my garage doors.
I was going to say the same thing. If you just leave them as regular parking spaces, but you feel that you have, have to have access to that bay that day, just put some cones out there. And then if, you know, later on, you're done accessing that bay, take the cones away so it can be used as parking.
Sure, we can do that.
I guess that's a, a solution.
I think that would be, be, be a great decision.
What about handicap parking?
We have handicap parking up through here, up this way.
So yeah, if, if the hatch marks could become just regular spaces and that five turns into 10 official spaces, that alleviates some concern in my mind.
Happy to do so.
Because again, we don't, we have another agenda item before us now where someone wants to use an available bay in a similar facility for car repair and they're going to want three or four more spaces. You're not getting three spaces out of that since we don't know the use. So to have 10 is a great setup. Because I don't know if we could go back to the project and say, oh, you're, you're having a lot more traffic in and out, we need you to go stripe some more parallel spaces. I don't know that the board could go back and mandate that.
Mind a modification, come back and say we, we need some extra parking spaces if they felt they needed.
Is that something we could initiate if, if we noticed a problem? That we could say, oh, you need to add more. That's why I think it's important to change those five hashes to 10 now.
Do you want to have the parallel now?
I mean, yeah, I mean, again, a problem would also be the landlord's problem, right? So he wants happy tenants. If he's having an issue and people aren't able to access, you know, he's going to either lose tenants or have to make a change. So I think it would be incumbent on Mr. Pontiff to, not disagree with you, but I think, you know.
No, if five becomes 10, that's great.
Yeah. I, you know, as I, I went and I drove around, I've driven around all the craftsmen, tradesmen, tradesmen's buildings in town and I did again today. And during the daytime, usually they're very quiet and they use probably less than half of the parking spaces that we've approved, so.
Well, I believe basically now it's just being like storage, is it not?
Yeah, right.
And I, thanks to Jen asking that question, could that be broken down for one person, breaking it down and, and renting the whole entire thing, or is it broken down for three people to rent it, or is it five? It's five, right?
Five bays.
Yeah.
But, but the front tenant's taking three of the five.
That's what I'm saying. So he could technically, well, he cuts it down to, there's really only going to be two people there, right?
Right.
There's going to be a tenant taking three, oh, well, there could be four, tenant taking three of the five.
There may be three separate entities, you know.
Yeah, so it'd be three separate.
And of course, bear in mind that, you know, most of the traffic to Nutrient A is probably going to park here with the retail sector and there wouldn't be much call, I would think, for, you know, parking in the rear storage portion. And it's more of a loading, I think that's why we had kind of a loading bay concept because initially that's how it was visualized, you know, parking for the retail up front, you know, some craftsmen, craftsmen trades in the back and really more of a loading facility, storage facility than any else that, but again, if it pleases the board, we're happy to increase the parking, just may not be used.
Well, I think if you just take the hatches out and use cones, that'll be fine. I mean, I've gone by the, the old ag building from the street and there's never crowds there. There might be a few cars there, but I mean, it's not, I've never seen the, the parking area ever filled up and overflowing and people out on the street. Never seen it.
And Mr. Pontiff pointed out last hearing, it's somewhat of a seasonal business, so I think, you know, nine or 10 months a year, you're going to have very light use.
Yeah.
Well, to your point, the one at 309 Tremont that we're talking about later, but separate issue, I go by there like almost all the time and the side of the building, those spots are always full. And I drove by today and in the back, there are two company vans parked back there that stay there overnight and they extend past the spaces, it's kind of tough to get around. But that side is always taken, they have parking in front, on the side and in the back. That's why having just five spots was concerning, because that one is busy during the day.
Yeah, that is, that is built busy, yeah, it is. Anything else?
I have a question. As long as you're going to stripe the, going to go from five to 10, you had mentioned maybe some parallel parking along there, would it, would it harm just to put those out?
No, I think it's a great idea, do the parallel in this area.
Great.
And I think this is underutilized right here too.
I mean, just to be, better be safe than sorry, like you said, instead of having to come back later.
Right.
Well, they are successful to bring in some more foot traffic or, you know, traffic that, that they haven't had before, so now they'll be prepared for it. With that, it's not really being used for anything, it really can't, probably couldn't hurt just to stripe it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Be proactive, I would say.
Anything else? Jim? Ellen?
I am.
You're participating in this vote tonight, so, but you can always ask a question on, on any of our projects.
So will you be able to tell what the business is from the street with a signage?
We, we have to come back and fill out a sign permit and when Mr. Pontiff figures out what the sign is going to include, the size of it, has to meet with the, with the zoning buyer, but there is a, you know, he's filled out an application, but there is a full sign permit process that he has to work with, where through showing the directory of which business is there or, you know, maybe just Nutrient AG Solutions with the other two entities that he might have with the back base.
Because with the way that, that road goes down there, could there be sort of a sign further, you know, ahead or behind on 58 stating that this business is coming up, just to kind of forewarn people that, you know, trucks or cars might be going there, because there isn't a lot of traffic there now?
No, that's something that the building inspector generally feels during the day, whether or not that sign makes sense or if he wants some additional signage, if Mr. Pontiff wants to have a sign like you're talking about. Okay, thanks.
In most cases, Ellen, the sign or something like this would be on the property. Yep. All right, if that's all the questions the planning board has, I see we do have some neighbors out here, but would you give us your name and address, please, and we'll try to take care of your questions.
Hi, I'm Judy Richards. Five Lillian Way. I'm not a direct-to-butter, but I know the property in there. My questions were the water, which they nicely gave the little diagram, but it's still hard to see where Lillian Way is and Forest Street and Main Street run on this map. Maybe you could give me some information how I can find this map? And I know you have your containments, but my other concern is how you're now using that back building basically as a sister building to the front building. And because the guidelines are the building's greater than a certain footage, you have to have sprinkler system in it, but the front building is shy of it by 10 feet, so that's how you get away from putting a sprinkler system in it. But now you're going to use the back buildings as purposeful storage of the supplies.
So I, I guess if you could just, I, I don't know how you want to answer that water question, the water flow question, I don't know if you have a bigger diagram or something to show.
Well, I can, I can certainly blow it up, but essentially that came out of a larger 24 by 36 map, where I tried to isolate it, I tried to like highlight where the contours are. The site is nearly at the top of groundwater divide, but the contours are clearly, if you look closely, you can see Route 58, you can closely look at where Forest Street is and I, I put a, a kind of a directional signal in where the, where the contours are and where the groundwater is, is flowing in that direction towards Monte Pone. So I'm happy to blow it up, we had a larger, larger area and send it over to Mr. Walsh if you'd like first to do that.
Is there somewhere like I can look online, wherever you got this from?
It, it's on, if I may, this is posted on the website, right, Mr. Walsh, the package that was submitted?
Not that, are you looking for the full document?
Yeah, so. Do you want it to show right now? She's got it here.
Yeah. So if you come up here, Judy.
So this is, this is the reference document that's been out that way, that state, that the USPS report. And so.
This is Main Street, this is Forest Flowing, this is where, you know, I'm taking the Lillian Way down this way. So this is Lillian, this is Forest Street and this is Main Street. This being by the pond. And these are the, these are the contours, the groundwater control, showing the direction coming that way here, in the water direction.
This is several times, well, here.
This is the groundwater flow and these are, these are. Yeah, so if you look at.
Water really.
Yeah, but this is obviously a yellow. And these are the contours that the directed, directed water can flow directly. Did they come all over the agenda yet?
Well, actually the groundwater doesn't flow into the pond, it goes under the pond, but with.
But there's also a landfill between them.
There's a landfill between you, which is the, the main contaminant to this, this whole thing. You were talking about the square footage of the buildings and all I can say about that is the, we've had other projects come before us, like the Odia Tick, which is across the street from where the old Shaws used to be. They split their buildings too, so that they didn't have to have sprinkler systems, I believe.
I believe the sprinkler system was like a, close to a million dollar project or something like that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not unusual for a site to have two buildings and, and to keep it under the, the square footage so that they don't have to put sprinkler systems in. But having said that, the buildings are well apart there and, and also we, they do have the containment system that is inside the building, of, of the steel with the six-inch sides. So I, unless you want to ask any further questions with clarification, you can.
I, I'm taking it that that whole back building has the six-inch containment?
Yes, not the whole building, it's the three bays that the AG is going to use.
Okay. Now, how can you get around those, the back of that building? It looks all grassed off.
Well, that's on the fire department.
Can, can you get around it?
Yeah, because there's a dumpster in one corner, I think.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've had, we have a letter from the fire department saying that, that the setup is, is okay to the fire department. I think you can, you can, you can get into the front of the building and you can get into the right side. The rear of the building is where the septic system is going to be. So they didn't plan on having trucks go out to the back. I don't know if you want to explain that about fire access to that building?
So during the, the pre-submission, the idea of having a 12-foot emergency access on this side going along the building went out that way. Mr. Boyle, Fire Protection, Jesse Boyle was all in favor of that. As, as you indicated, yeah, there is, there is a dumpster back there, but in terms of any attack hoses that they might have, the fire department has access. This is all going to be clear because it is the septic system for the project back in this area right through here. You can see by the landscaping vegetation that, you know, we, we've kept landscaping off of the, the septic system back in this area. We have probably man doors, there's going to be man doors back in this area. So I, I think from Mr. Boyle, Fire Protection, Fire Deputy Chief, he sent another letter over making sure that the planning board knew where, where the fire department stood and that they were satisfied with the overall site design, site access, coming into the site and going out of the access. Fussin' O'Neil has taken a look at the site, they have, they've, they made several comments that we responded to and now they're, they're satisfied with all the different changes and revisions that we made.
And they're considered professionals, are they not?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, I mean, we generally go by what the fire department asks, asked for and so they were happy with what was provided or they were satisfied, I'd say, with what was provided, so.
Okay, but like my big concerns was the water being affected and they seem to have that under control.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I can understand because that area, of course, because of the landfill there, but you know, whatever was buried in the landfill was buried with no protection to the groundwater whatsoever, where these buildings, there's been a lot of thought, there's been a lot of process to have the steel floors on the sides and to have the entrapment at the doors. So, you know, I really, and since they've really had no problems at the, the existing agway, I mean, it just goes to show that so far, things have, have been, you know, have been run well there. So I, you know, I'm, I'm happy personally, I think that, you know, what's there, I don't think will, would affect the neighbors. But then I was also thinking today that gee, you know, what's being stored here is being used as by the cranberry growers, the carver, and that's what they spray the bogs with. So, you know, not only those chemicals there, but they're also at, at the bogs, you know, all through town and, and we do have a lot of homes around in those areas. So if it's safe for that, I, you know, it should be safe for this site too with the containment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public have any, anything else to say? Seeing no other, I don't know if there's any other questions by the planning board. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing then.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
So we have a motion and, see, motion by Kevin, second by Ellen, so who's in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. Do we have a decision prepared for this, Jim? We have a copy of this on your table, probably, for real. Before, the planning board members, do you want to have the engineers go through the waivers that we have? Or is everybody satisfied with the waivers? Or is everybody satisfied with the waivers?
Well, the one, the section 3241 waiver on, or no, that's the landscaping.
That was the pack for packing?
No, that was the landscaping, never mind.
There's also 3330, which is the one regarding parking.
Yeah.
And that's the waiver, but we could put a language in the condition for them to remove the hatching and just replace with, you know, replace with parking for a total of 10 parking spaces. Get into the condition part of it.
Then was the landscape that we had talked about? What is that part of this? I'm trying to start over this real quick.
We'd have to add that as well.
Yeah, we have to add language for that.
Okay, maybe we should just go through the conditions then, Jim, and then we can see what we might want to add.
Right. So, conditions, condition one, prior to issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the court's decision is registered to Plum County Registry of Deeds, shall be submitted to the planning permitting office. Condition two, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Number three, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, cementation, and soil erosion control shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust or debris. Condition four, on the grading plan, page 412A, the applicant shall obtain a certification and stamp plan from a structural engineer for the proposed retaining wall on the site and submit to the building commissioner during the building permit approval process. For B, the applicant shall continue the proposed grading, e.g., 130-foot contour and spot grades along the northern property line. Grading shall reflect one foot wide shoulder behind Kate Cobberm as detailed. Condition number five, the applicant and each of the future tenants of the contractor tradesman spaces must conform to section 2230 use regulation schedule, the Carver zoning bylaws, as well as any other provisions of the zoning and general bylaws and requirements of the Carver Fire Department. Condition six, the applicant shall adhere to the conditions outlined in the Carver Fire Department comment letters dated January 30th, 2020, and June 1st, 2020. Condition number seven, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid. As-built plans shall be submitted to the town's engineer and planning department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to final inspection. And C, in accordance with section 3180 compliance of the Carver zoning bylaws, the town's engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions.
So there was a couple of things, I guess, there was one about the landscaping.
Yeah, how would you do with that? Change the stuff in the back to eliminate trees from where they're not needed and they're high, and putting bigger trees in where they get.
Well, I'm not well spoken, so that sounds great.
Could you say that again?
Can I make this, Jim? You know, you're considered the most well spoken guy in the room right now, so you just hook that thing up. Make sure that they have the opportunity to not necessarily put the trees on top of other trees, and they, you know, use that money to adequately reach that same.
Do you have a million dollar tree that you want to recommend?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to try to see if this works, Jim, for you?
Sure.
If there's a reduction in the landscaping shown on the approved site plan, then that reduction in landscaping is to be used in the equal amount elsewhere for landscaping to be provided as deemed by the planning board, engineer, and the building inspector. Does that work for you?
Can we just specify that one rule, I don't want landscaping up here reduced, to put somewhere else. Can we specify that it's just the border that abuts the residential properties?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate her saying that too, because in that wording, you know, you may have to consider that tree coming down, you know what I mean, in order to plant, put plantings in that aren't going to die, because they're already, they're already there there in the first place.
There's 25-foot hedge across the back, you get to the last 20 feet, and it falls right off. So Kevin wants to say, don't build the hedge, it's pre-existing, but substitute with, it's the same amount of money for eight-foot trees, get 25-foot trees in that one area.
In this area, yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe we say, you know.
Actually, I think you want to point down that it's in the left, left rear corner.
This corner? That corner.
That just needs to be bolstered?
Yes.
So maybe, you know, applicant shall be permitted to deviate from the submitted landscaping plan to reduce overall coverage on the rear boundary line, provided that applicant shall supplement landscaping features with, you know, more mature trees in the southwest corner of the lot.
That's what I.
I want him speaking for me, that was excellent.
That's what I said.
Did you get that line?
Nope.
Nope.
Well, it was a suggestion, so we can just say that again.
Can you just submit that? We have a general idea, I think.
Marty, you have an idea?
Well, I think we have the general idea.
I can say against fully, if you'd be helpful.
We want to bolster it, we want to add 25-foot trees and make it look great.
Yeah. But, yeah, applicant shall be allowed to reduce, you know, proposed landscaping features on the rear boundary, provided that applicant shall supplement the southwest corner with additional tree and landscaping features, something like that.
In the past, when we have added, kind of, when we've modified conditions, I know that, like, I've worked with Jim on wording and emailed it to him, and it was okay, and then it was approved that way when we went to sign it. Can we have you email that wording to Jim, and then Jim puts it in here, so when we go sign it, that wording is there? So tonight, we could say, like, we approve the project with the revised condition or something.
Volume escaping.
Right. If we can have his wording in the document that we sign if this is approved.
Or if we write really fast right now, give me the paper.
That's right, that's right.
I can write something, sure.
Because I know we've done that before, I know that I've worked with you on wording before.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
So then, yeah, so that, and then, how do we say the changing of the spaces? Changing the hatches to spaces, and then maybe adding some parallels? How do we change that here? Because we're referencing, like, site plans in here that are now.
Right, and then.
Different.
Eric, do you have a quantity that you're proposing for the parallel spaces among the?
Yeah, I think we can probably achieve at least another five to seven, don't you think, Mark?
Five to seven parallel spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd even be comfortable saying seven. Do you know why we have the hatching on that, this area?
Mostly because we don't want people to park there and not having the trucks be able to go around here a large part.
I see, so that could go to a parallel maybe there?
Yes.
So the applicant will revise plan to add seven additional parking spaces?
Well, that's on the parallel, but also on the front to move the hatching.
Yeah, to change the five to 10, and then add parallel, but would that involve needing a whole new plan prepared?
No, the plan can be revised, and we could just write in our conditions that the hatching will be taken out at the rear building.
Okay.
It's only going to require lines, I think.
Yeah, no, I know, I just, since these usually reference plan sets, I didn't know if we had to change this, because it references specific plan sets.
Uh, yeah, I suppose, yeah, I mean.
Or at least the sheet, you know, they can revise the sheet.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if this references plan dated June 2nd or whatever, and that's the June 2nd plan, and we want other spaces, does a different?
Yeah, that can be revised, because we don't have the funds here to sign tonight anyway.
Okay.
So we could approve the project tonight, and then sign the conditions and the plans during the week, whenever the plans are ready.
Okay, so then I guess the only other thing is waivers requested section 3241, it specifically says the applicant has proposed 13 parking spaces, so that'll just have to be changed to whatever the final number is.
So we get 10 plus 7, so we have 17 spaces?
Correct, so we could just put a number on it.
Okay.
Well, wait, no, there, it says 13, so we're going to add at least five, so that brings
it up to 18, and then you're saying seven parallels, so 25?
Or, uh.
No, because it's saying 13 right now, so the five and the.
Okay, yeah, 13 if you add front plus back, that'd be, because there's eight on the front building, five on the back building currently, you're changing that to 10 spaces in front of the building, seven spaces on the southern property line, but 17 plus the eight is 25.
25, yeah.
You want the right number?
So that just has to be changed in the wording page?
Well, we can, in the condition, we can also change the waiver to the correct number of parking spaces.
Okay. Just want to make sure the numbers are right.
I wonder if we just really need a waiver now?
Right, right.
So I think we can just probably cross out that waiver, strike the waiver because you're providing more spaces than you originally intended.
We'd prefer to have a waiver just to avoid any, you know, incongruity with the biologists in cases, because there are various ways to calculate as we've seen, so, you know, we prefer a grant of waiver and just specify a number of spaces.
Sure, okay, so just update the waiver to the number of parking spaces that are going to be provided on the plane.
That'd be safest from our perspective, yeah, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, are you going to read the language of this?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, so.
Take a second.
Landscaping is proposed in the approved site plan along the rear boundary line may be reduced in the applicant's discretion, provided that the applicant shall supplement the proposed landscaping on the southwest corner of the site with larger trees. Does that work for everybody?
Right?
Yeah, that sounds good, and as long as the site plans and the revised parking is all set, that's great.
I might add a second.
Thank you guys for being so cooperative, and I must say, the landscaping you provided on the other sides looked, it's really nice.
Yeah.
We wanted it to be a nice looking site.
You know, and I know that's something that's always been really important to me, and you guys seem to have done, I mean, just looking at that, it's a really nice job, looking at the plan to you, so thank you.
So what I'll do is, I'll put that in as a new condition five, and then everything else will kind of bump down.
Okay.
And then the other question, so applicant will remove five hatch spaces and, let's say, re-strive for 10 spaces in front of the rear building, and provide seven parallel spaces along the southern property line.
14.
Line.
14.
Or a total of.
Total of 25 parking spaces.
Make sure we pull it.
You give it out there, nine.
Yeah.
10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Not in there.
All right, so, yeah, so we all set now?
I think we have 25. I think we've got 25.
So I think you have enough now. All right, I'll entertain.
Should we have it something in here about the spill containment? As far as the, does it have to be in the condition?
It's on plan. Yeah, how did we, is that noted on the plan? The spill containment?
Not for the interior, but Mr. Pontek has to appear architectural for the building inspector. You can add another condition that the architectural plans are included, containment system, Jim.
You could even say as set forth in the application, because it is described in some detail in the narrative.
It's in the how letter, right?
Correct, yes, how letter, yes.
So as in specific details of what is contained and what it's made of?
It's a six-inch steel containment barrier with a gate around the entire interior of the building.
What's on the floor? I know I'm out of line, but what's on the floor?
So it's concrete floor, and then you have the containment around the edge.
Some concrete floor, floor course.
It was steel.
Well, the steel's going to be on top of the floor.
So the floor is concrete, and then picture a piece of steel angle iron sealed to the floor around to provide a curving system, which then a gate closes to make that continuous throughout.
Mr. Sinclair's out of order because public hearings closed.
You already closed, you already closed public hearing.
I'm on you.
I like it.
I'm on you.
Is the material there?
So I'd like to ask if the floor.
Is it solid or liquid? I'm just curious.
I mean, for engineering practices, I think we provide concrete as an impervious material.
That's right. And, I mean, you know, practically speaking, if there were to be a spill, which we think is, you know, unlikely, it would be promptly cleaned up if there were any seepage into concrete. I can't imagine it would be more than 20 minutes, let's hope, you know, it'd be a pretty thick concrete barrier to get to the groundwater.
And I believe there's regulatory rules on cleanup anyways.
Right, we'd have to report it, and the firefighter would be all over the site, and, you know, we'd get clean properly.
It's not something you can hide.
But the steel barrier should, how thick is the steel barrier, do you know? The thickness of the material?
We haven't got into the details of that now. I mean, there's also, you know, under the concrete, there's a poly or a plastic material, you know? Before you pour the concrete, there's also another barrier of plastic material under it.
And I think that, you know, something you can hang your hat on is you've got a national company, really a multinational company, that's, you know, standing behind this, it's not a mom and pop, that if there's a spill, it goes off into the sunset, you know, you've got a good credit, so to speak, for any cleanup if it occurs.
Yeah, if there's going to be somebody there all year long, I know you say that this is seasonal, but is there somebody monitoring those buildings all year long?
Yeah, they continue with normal hours through the winter.
They do, okay, so somebody is there, okay. I don't know, is it possible to provide the, Jim, with the specifications of the flooring that you have, just so that it would be on record? The thickness of the steel, is that, that you're going to put in there? You must have some sort of a, I mean, if you're going to build a building and you're going to put the metal floor in, there must be some description of what the material that you're going to use.
The building department will get all that, right? You know, but we could try to provide, I don't know if it's ready yet, but we could try to provide it to Jim in advance of our submission to the building department, is that feasible, and maybe, you know, maybe.
Eric, with the idea that if we gave Jim a diagram, essentially, I don't know if you work with the Otley's, and what the Otley's have?
Right.
A diagram that Jim could attach to, maybe.
And they probably have them on other sites, they could probably pull something from another site, you know, and furnish it just as an example.
I mean, it just might be helpful to know for the fire department or whatever, just to know what kind of material there is there, how thick it is.
So you want specifications regarding the steel containment barrier? Yeah, provide specs relative to steel containment barrier, okay.
And you could also put that in the decision too, I suppose, if, to provide. And you could also put that in the decision too, I suppose, if, to provide specs of the steel containment.
Yeah, one of the memos...
The spec, specifications for the system shall be furnished to the building commissioner prior to issuance of a building permit.
One of the memos does say six inches high, but it doesn't say anymore.
Yeah, six inches high doesn't say how thick the material is, yeah.
Right, but they did give that, something exciting.
But in order to build it, they eventually need some sort of specs for that, for the thickness of that. And this is something that they use, Agway uses for, or AG uses for all its buildings all through the, the country? Is this something that they do all the time?
Yeah, I don't know if they're doing it through all the buildings, but I know the one specifically in Carver already has it in place.
Okay.
And that's an older building, so you gotta think they probably are more conservative as, you know, for newer facilities.
Okay. All right, so if you'd like, I can just kind of read.
Okay.
So I'll start off with the parking, so, so we already read the new number five, which is regarding the landscaping. Now we got the new number six regarding the parking. Applicant shall remove the five hatch parking spaces, and re-strike for ten parking spaces in front of the rear building. Applicant shall provide seven parallel spaces along the southern property line for a total of twenty-five parking spaces. All right, so item number seven is regarding the containment system. The buildings shall be equipped with a six-inch high steel containment barrier all around the interior of the building. Any door openings will be a gate system that drops down to make the containment continuous in the event of a spill occurs in the building. Set containment as described in the HOA engineers' letter dated, I think it's February twenty, twenty-six. Specifications for the containment system shall be submitted to the building commissioner prior to issuance of the building permit.
All right, anything else? Ready, all set? Okay, I'll entertain a... To approve the project with the amended conditions for Eric Pontiff, property off of, off of Forest Street.
All right, I'll, my last meeting will do it. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan review for the project off Forest Street for Eric Pontiff, Nutrient AG Solutions.
And I'll second it. Oh, Jim, would you like to second it, where you're going up together?
Come on, buddy.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm here.
So we have a motion to approve by Jen, seconded by Kevin. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so unanimous with the board members that we have here tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I know it's been a long process, and, but I, I, I'm, I think I'm happy with the outcome. But we've had a lot of planning board problems, missing people, and elections, and viruses, and it just wasn't affected by any riots, though. So that's a good thing.
You might start one, but...
So I, I thank you for, for hanging in there with us and working with us.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Is this the last of you all to publicly will?
Oh, me?
Have a good night, guys.
All right, good, good, good. I hope you noticed I was wearing the Kahart shorts tonight.
All right, if everybody's all set, we'll go on to Limbia's path.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night, good luck. Do you want to, was, see, this is Limbia's path, so this is a lot release and marketing of the affordable, affordable unit with the discussion and possible hope.
So after I put that on the agenda, the owner of Limbia's path, Karen Cash, requested to pull off on the decision. She wanted to go ahead and try to complete, complete as much of the inspection report, tick off the number of the items before coming back for the lot release. So, you know, expect it to him maybe sometime later on this summer, coming back to the board for the lot release.
Okay, so, okay, so we're not gonna do anything with this tonight?
Just table it.
So we'll just table this to whenever we hear from them again, I guess. Okay, so the next on the agenda is three oh-nine Tremont Street, it's unit four, it's an automotive services special permit application. So we're gonna have a discussion, and I'll see, it's on the application materials required, considering recently approved site plan for property. And I, I just must say that I looked through the, the plans that we had approved, and I, and I did go by the site today. And there is on the plan, and it, it's gonna be there because the building is in operation now, but there is a drain containment area, so anything that comes, that, that flows on the floor goes into a containment off the, off the site, which can be pumped. And then the second thing that I noticed was, and that I was concerned about was the, the parking. And I noticed about probably a little less than half of the po, see, I went by at about three o'clock in the afternoon, and about less than half the parking spaces were used. So, that's what I noticed anyway, as I, as I drove through, going through the area. I don't know if you want to sit, talk about this before we move on?
Right, so the purpose of having this here, so Mr. Emerson has applied for a special permit for the auto repair use. And so because they had been here within the past couple of years with a full-blown site plan review for the building, as well as having peer review, et cetera, et cetera, I just want to make sure that what he's provided us here for the, for the June twenty-third special permit hearing is adequate, or is there any other materials that the planning board desires to have submitted?
Did that, did that show all the parking spaces? When I hit that point, so, let's just pack it here. Yeah.
Do you have a plan sheet to have just the parking spaces?
Yes, that's good. I, I do want all, all the original stuff, I just, I just tried to keep this over here.
And just give us your name and address, please.
Jamie Emerson, Sixland, Delane, Somerset. And we're talking about this three oh-nine Tremont Street. I built this about two years ago, it was about a year with the planning board, in the engineering and all the stuff. Spent a lot of money, we did everything right, everything is on record. Every single one of our garage bays, which I didn't really hear anything tonight on this, is, every single floor is pitched. So from the front of, the back of the bay all the way in, all the way to the last fifteen feet, and that last fifteen feet, it's folded in in all four directions to a floor jing, a drain. Each bay, and then goes out into a, a self-contained hundred percent tight tank, which was all, you know, inspected as we built it. And as far as like the parking lot, we have a sub-drated system in the back. Everything is burned and go into the sub-drated system. What I got for like clients and like, and listening to this, is a lot of the times you're gonna get, when we're building these, the town wants to know what they're gonna be. We call them like, you know, contractor bays, it's one of the listings on there. You really don't know, you're taking the risk of, I invest a lot in this town, J L K Realty. We, we own a ton of property in the town, we believe in the town, and I took a big risk building this building, and to be honest with you, I never built another one. It was a ton of money, the taxes are incredible, we thought there would be twelve based on Buzz Italiano's, yeah, eighteen something. It's been a wicked struggle. It took a while to fill up, and now we finally do have good clients. So our clients that we have right now are basically, some of them are contractors, you see the cars that they pull in, and then they're just gone, all dead. Personally, me maintaining the building and being there, I've never seen a customer there yet, not one. I'll give you just a quick description of the five units. The very far left one is an H B A C company, they all show up, get in their parking spots, the vans all leave for the day. It's flawless, he has a, he has a good amount of vehicles, he, nobody even parks in the garage. The next one over would be a crane company. He's coming in the building with a forty-foot crane, it's huge. That crane just pulls in, he backs in, all he does, his two vehicles are in the front, they go to work all day, they come back. That's, that's unit two. Unit three is Slowie Electric, got a couple of guys, comes in, they leave, no one ever comes to the building. Unit five actually is completely online what they do, there is only two people that go there, and all they're doing is really packaging. They sell pots online, there's no customers, he's never had a customer. So unit four, the one that we're in question of, when I showed the unit to, to the applicant, I said, you know, as you know, there's not a lot of parking here. And he said, I totally understand, I am not trying to run like this big auto repair place. I'm just a small-time person that I'm kind of sick of working for someone, and I want to try and run my own shop, it's gonna be appointment only. They pull up, they drop it off, and then that, that car takes them away, you know, they need a ride to drop it off. And, because me as the owner, I said, you know, you don't have a ton of parking. He said, it's gonna be scheduled, it's gonna be a couple cars at a time, and, you know, we're gonna do, they do a bunch of little things. They might, for some guy, maybe put a little performance item on their car. You know, it's, 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 it's a guy that wants to do a little bit of everything, about light mechanics. And so he actually rented the bay and didn't realize that his use had the star next to it, when he looked at it. And so he, he's not performing anything to the public, but he's, he's in there, he's moved, he's moved in. He's just paying for his own stuff really in there now, and setting up with hopes that this gets approved. As far as the offices go in the front, you had a great question about all the parking, and to be honest with you, I have mainly residential. I own ground effects in, in, in the town of Carver there in the center, that had a big parking lot, I was very happy about, you know, that. I own most of sixty-six Main Street with a restaurant, and a bunch of units are there, so I see all the parking. When I built this, I said, geez, if someone comes along, they're gonna need those, maybe more, more parking spots. And I, I tell you, most of it, it's, it's, it's really people just use the bay for something, just like the thirty units out of Ron Plymouth Street. You don't see a lot of cars there, and I did my research, you know? And of course, we, we met the parking code when we did the permit, and I always had concerns about this. I think the two units you guys were questioning will be a non-issue. You know, especially if they don't have an office, because every other one of my bays besides, no, every single one of them, with the applicant, all that is in that office is a personal desk for the, for the owners, the kids are screaming at their houses, this is why they moved there. You know, so they gotta get away, so they can get on the phone, they go over plans, that's all that's in there, if you ever go and look in the windows. They might meet somebody if someone calls and says, hey, I really would like to meet you right at your office. And everybody I talked to this is, they meet on the job site, they talk over the phone, very, very rare. I actually had J L K Realty there for a little while, and no one even wanted to come to that, we moved it to another location in Carver. So this is what he wants to do, he wants to do it the right way. He, I can't emphasize enough that he's small, small-time, you guys might be thinking like, you know, I'm very pro-business in Carver. I, I mean, with the taxes, I really think we have to be, and I don't think every scenario is perfect. And I just think we got, you know, we gotta try and let people take shots at things, and it's my duty if the guy overwhelms other parking spots to say, this doesn't work anymore. Unfortunately, you've, you've, you're growing, and you need to start looking and move on. But he, you know, you know, I don't want someone that's in there for two months. So I really grilled him and said, you understand, you're gonna be appointment only. You know, you're gonna set an appointment, they're gonna drop a car off, you're gonna finish those cars, you're gonna be on to the next. And he said, most of the places we looked at that you can do this was the same way. You know, and if you look at all the Carver buildings around, they're all a couple spots in the front, a couple spots in the back, with a couple outside, just like we have, you know, on Meadow Street, on Plymouth Street, and I know this new one's being built. So that, that's the story I can, I can answer, I'm, I'm actually doing this free for them because they should have this team over here doing it, but they're just regular, regular guys trying to take a shot at it. So I says, listen, I'll go and, they had no idea, they had no idea what to do. So I kinda, instead of having my engineer do everything for this pretty simple garage bay, I did something up for you guys all to look at. And I, I was only emphasizing on the site because I said, I, I mean, I went through this site, it took a long time. Nothing, no offense to you guys, it took a long time. And, you know, do this, do this, change this, and thirty-five thousand dollars later to the engineer, we had a plan finally. I just don't, we already proved it, the town already approved the site, the site is there. I did everything, the tight tanks are on record. And when you guys drive through, you, actually when you drive around the building, you drive right over it. And of course, those tight tanks are there, they're not for anybody to ever use, as you know, they're just there for an emergency. So that's, that's the rundown, anything that I can answer, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, Jamie. So basically, I think the only, his only obstacle would be the board of health has to approve the fact that, you know, if he is doing light mechanic work in there, is it gonna be, you know, any gas spill, any oil spill, transmission fluid spill? Any fluid, brake fluid, right? I think that's gonna be the only thing that really is going to be a concern as far as that.
So what I did, Kevin, is I went to Jesse Boyle, and he's the one that inspected the whole building in the beginning. And we, we ran the use by him, and he went over all the codes, he did some legwork, he called me back in about four days and says, I, I will recommend to the planning board, if they need a letter, that this use fits everything that you're asking to do. Of course, there are some, you know, with where are you gonna store your oil inside the unit, what kind of container, you know, things like that. But he said, you have everything in place, it's built, you know, what you need for. And then I also went to Bob Francis, and he took about a week going through the original approval, and the letter of the bylaw, and the, you know, everything about it, and he got back and said, everything that we're doing here is within, within what you've created. And he, and he said, obviously, it's a special permit, so he said, you have... So he said, you have to go in front of planning. And that's where we are right now. And I wanted to come in, thanks to Jim, just to kinda, I think it's easier just to tell you guys what's going on and answer any questions.
And I wanna make a point. You do a class act.
Oh, thank you.
It's an improvement to our town, what he's brought in, you know. I could personally say I enjoyed pulling my dump truck and trailer into ground effects and being able to pick up something if I needed.
You do.
You know, I mean, that's, that's nice.
We just ripped down like a property that...
But it was rundown. It was rundown, you took it, you made it look absolutely beautiful. I think you did the same thing, I wanna say on Center Street. You took a disaster out of our town and you made it nice.
We just took quite a farm down over on Meadow Street. That was vacant and people inside of it dumping their trash on the property. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that property on roughly one ninety-one Meadow. Drove by, there was like an abandoned house there. And I love the town, I only moved out of the town because I wanted to move onto the water. I own a lot of property in the town, I'm farthest town. I love doing things like this in the town. I think it's a great town. I'm not really the complainer of the taxes, I pay a lot of taxes. My average property I have is eight thousand dollars, that one being eighteen thousand. I'm a big fan of the town. I just think that this town, not, nothing to do with this, I think we have to stay on that, really being pro-business. Because sometimes when you bog everybody down before they even start, I mean, sometimes in the planning boards, you don't see this. We want business and they give up before they even start. Like, I went over to sixty-six Main Street where the Fiesta Restaurant is. And I bought half of that, I own five out of eight of the buildings over there, units. And they were vacant. And me and my wife, which is my partner in the real estate, we found the clients and brought them to Cava. And now, if you drive over there, you'll see, every single unit is full. And that's what I'm trying to do. And like, I loved seeing this plan, to be honest with you. I don't like politics, because I'm afraid to say something and someone else doesn't agree. But I love seeing that, that land's been vacant. I think that containment system is great. I think it's probably in a better area than it is over where it's at. And it's a big company and they're gonna do it right. And you know, I think it's great. But I got off track. That's where I'm at with the unit. And you guys ultimately make the decision on what you think based on the the building inspector and the fire chief.
I think you're good, I think your explanation was excellent. I thank you for your work in the town. I think just an explanation, when you come to us, about the, my thing that I'm most concerned of is just the parking. If, just go over how we came up with the parking spaces that are there. As long as the building complies to the parking that was approved, then, I mean, you have all the spill containment, you have, you know, pretty much everything that needs to be there is there already. So I think just kind of, you know, when you come to us for the special permit, just a little review of the history and, you know, how you came about those things. But yeah, the building looks great, the property looks...
No, I probably spent a little bit too much money on the building. And you're gonna see a lot of them go, I heard from the building inspector, a lot of them's gonna go up. But I wanted to make it nice. And I think you guys probably noticed, just doing the glass windows in the front, most of them just look, they don't look too good. And again, I mean, invested very, a lot in Cava. And I love seeing stuff being done. And I mean, I probably bother people too much in the town. Because I say, what's going on down at, you know, I'm the one that developed the gas station down in front of the Dunkin' Donuts. And I bought that house that was there and developed it and sold that to the gas station. But I believed in that. And when the guy came, I could not sell that property. And the guy came and seen the traffic, he said, no way. I'll tell you right now, he ended up, two years later, he said, that's the best site that I got. Yep, which unfortunately just recently sold because they made him such a big offer. You've probably seen the name change. But you guys have dealt with Mickey Higgins in the past, he's an excellent guy. But that was another one of my things in Cava. I just, I'm always paying attention to what's going on back there. You know, with the urban development and seeing if we're gonna get some more revenue coming, you know?
Which we're gonna need, yeah.
I just have a quick question, but on the application, it says unit four. And then on this, the maps are showing unit three.
I actually said to Jim, I've got so many things going on. And I started writing three all over everything, so I just need to correct that, that it is unit four.
Because, and just to follow up on this, unit four comes with a retail front, retail space in front, garage in the back. And there are three parking spaces in the front and three spaces behind the unit. So everybody was asking about that. It's three in the front, three in the back for unit four.
Yep.
We asked you that and I just noticed it in there, so.
Yep, and what the guy plans on doing, he's actually, we have outer spots. I don't know if you noticed when you drove through. He's gonna take his car and just park on one of the outer spots. So when someone comes in on the front to drop someone off, and then the car's actually gonna go in the bay. When it's fixed, they'll come back out and they pick it up, so. I don't wanna overthink it too much because then I say to the guy, you know, you might overgrow this too quick, but he doesn't wanna be big. He wants to just be the mechanic that, he fixes a family car and he's not looking to be big time. This is already a big enough move, you know? The bays are pretty expensive, you know, because it's a new facility. And so I wish everybody luck. I mean, everybody in the building right now is doing really good, really good.
It's a great spot and it's a high-traffic area, so when you drive by, it's on an eyesore at all.
Yes.
It's a well-known part of the town.
Yep.
You guys did a great job, you did a great job.
Yep, thank you.
And one more thing to congratulate this. I mean, this person that's renting this is actually putting revenue into the town and would be doing it at their house. And at least they got a containment center, you know? And this can be handled. So publicly speaking, that is a win-win for us as well, you know? So I do appreciate, you know, you coming before the board and, you know, showing us, you know, what you have done. And hopefully, what you're gonna continue to do, you know, and encourage and support that.
There's not much land left. I mean, people are holding back from listing it. So we're, you know, we got about, right now, we got six homes going up in Cava, brand new. We're having trouble finding land here. You know, and the values in this town, because the town is doing very well with, in my opinion, doing over the police station, the fire. I mean, it's the school. I mean, there's gonna be people that are not liking it, but a lot of people are really gonna like that, in my opinion. I know, people I know will. And it's gonna be, the values are very good in the town, you know?
Turnkey town.
You know, you see the real estate listings in the town, we go down to like six listings, if you guys never follow this. We all have like six houses for sale in this town, that's pretty low, you know? At times. So do you need the applicant to come on the twenty-third or can I come again and...
Yeah, I think you can come, if the applicant wants to, that's fine. But I think you explained it well, so we'll just do the public hearing part of this. And if anybody has any questions, but...
Mr. Chair, isn't it a benefit to the gentleman coming in there, kinda like a public commercial for him or her?
Yeah, yeah, well, sometimes it is.
A lot of people, you gotta remember, when I first started going to these meetings...
I was there, I was where you were, okay?
They're like...
It's probably why I'm here.
There's nothing really to be that nervous about, but, you know, especially with Jen, she looks very harmless up here, but... I mean, they'll have beads of sweat coming down their...
I'm gone, don't worry about it.
Well, no, I'm just saying, they'll have beads of sweat coming down their forehead. And they're like, I don't know what I'm doing here, you know? And they get very nervous, you know? So I, you know, again...
But it's good for you to know that. It is an opportunity for like, I don't wanna be cheesy, but for a plug, you know? To explain, you know, I mean, people, you know, it would help him. Not necessarily, not, I know you keep it small, you know? But just an opportunity for him to put in...
I mean, I hope that he can open up and I hope that he can stay there and be successful. I know he'll get the work, the car count's incredible. But you know, you just worry, I mean, you worry how, you know, you gotta know how to run a business too, right? That's another thing, you gotta know how to run a business. So it's always, it's a risk for the landlord, it's a risk for the guy. So I try not to think ten years out. I try and like, let's try and get you approved and hopefully you have good luck, you know? And I keep a good eye on everything.
Well, thank you for your explanation and we'll see you scheduled at the next meeting, right, for the public hearing.
Can I ask a question out of curiosity? Because I wasn't involved in that. Those garage bays in the back, you said a crane can fit in there, so how many cars could fit in there?
So to give you an idea of what you couldn't see inside is the bay's about forty-eight feet. And then the office in the front would be twelve feet by twenty-four. So it's just like a small meet and greet, but like I said, most people just have a desk to write all their bills in. But it's a huge bay, there's twenty-four-foot-high ceilings in it. So it's just, it's, you know, I'm renting them because it's, you know, everybody has picked up on, it's not hidden, it's exposed. You know, a lot of the, like, a lot of the ones that we have are around the corner, they really have any signage. And they really liked the front offices, which at first, I didn't know if it was gonna be a big hit and they just wanted a bigger bay, you know? But if you're a landscaper, you'd put a couple trucks in there, you'd write your bills at... These guys are crazy, they're writing their bills at seven o'clock at night. I see them in there with the light on and still working, you know? It's just all hard-working guys. But right now, I got a really good group of people. Really good group of people. So it's a lot more work than some of my residential properties. But I mean, it is a nice building, it's, and I just gotta keep it full to pay the taxes.
All right, thank you. All right. We'll see, like I say, we'll see you again on the next meeting and do the same thing. I don't see any problem with this, with what you have.
All right. All right, and congratulations, you guys.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Ten Alexandra Way, it's a vote on a lot release. And I went through Alexandra Way today and I saw that it's an existing subdivision. All the houses are built there, they've been there, it's probably ten years or more. So if you want to explain, Jim?
Sure. So the request is from an attorney who's doing a closing. Apparently, they're missing the lot release, you know, they did title search, they're missing the lot release from two thousand and three. So there's not an original copy, nor is there one recorded at the registry of deeds. So to make sure they convey a clear title, I provided them with the copy, but they need an original, signed one. So we're hoping the planning board can vote to approve a lot release and then to sign off on the lot lease form.
Any questions?
Could I sign this since I didn't sign the original?
None of us, I don't think, I didn't sign it.
Yeah, I think it's just confirming an existing lot release question. And there's a copy of the actual one that was in here. So we're just trying to help the parties out.
So this one was official, but it didn't get recorded where it should have?
They can't find it, so, yeah. So the assumption is that they can't find the original. I felt very lucky that I was able to find this copy of the lot lease.
So the lots were officially released, but they just can't find the original copy. So we're here tonight to sign another original so that they can do it. The houses already exist here, so obviously, the lots were released.
Right, okay.
So I just, so we just need a vote. See, so entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion in my last meeting to release the lot for Ten Alexandra Way, lot number eight.
Lot eight.
I'll second that and excuse myself to go to the bathroom.
So we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
We need your vote.
We need your vote, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Ellen didn't vote on this, yeah. Because this wasn't one of her... Pretty soon, she'll be able to vote on all of these things.
That's right.
That's why we have an elevation party.
Yeah, so we have some training opportunities for board members. Oh yeah, so we're gonna sign, I guess we may as well, if you can just pass that around, we'll sign it. Wait till Kevin gets back and then we'll continue on.
All right, so the citizen planners training collaborative, put out this notice for training. So one of the first trainings is creating master plans. And that's being done on June fifteenth at seven P M. And I'm just trying to figure out if, it says it's live, but I think it's just a live Zoom kind of thing. And then there's other trainings that include roles and responsibility of planning boards and boards of appeal. I know someone who would be a great candidate for that. And if you wanted to, I believe...
I'll take it all, sign me up for it.
Live recording, very live workshop, probably on May fourteenth. And you know, say if you wanted to come in and do it together, I'd be happy to do it with you. So that way, you don't feel all by yourself trying to get through it. Some presenters are very good, other presenters are less than good. And then they also offer some pre-recorded workshops. Special permits and variances, so the special permit side of it would be very useful to have. Writing reasonable, defensible decisions. I think Jen specializes in that one, because she's always after me to make corrections.
Can I still take the classes?
I think, yeah, you can, it's, you can. Public officials, so it's good to have that background. And so they have award certificates, et cetera, et cetera. So do it individually or we could try to get together and do something. Just let me know. June fourteenth is coming up very quick, because I think, is that next Monday?
The fourteenth is Sunday.
It's Sunday.
Yeah, my daughter's birthday's Sunday.
Oh, fifteenth, so that'd be a Monday.
So yeah, sign us up and of course, we still, we don't have our newest planning board member with us tonight. So we have to contact him.
Do you want to, so you're interested in the June fifteenth one, that's a live present at seven P M?
Sure.
Is that by, is that a Zoom or is that...
I'm gonna have to just...
That's a live online workshop, it says.
Okay, live online, okay, so live online. So we, I can just try to line up some computers, if you do it at the office.
So are these hour-long things or how long are these?
Three days.
No problem.
No sleep. Yeah, I'd have to find out a little bit more about it.
Okay.
Yeah. So all right, so we have some folks, you shall... Let's see who else, if Mr... Gasky.
Gasky, yeah.
See if Mr. Gasky's available for that.
Okay.
All right, so get that...
Well, thank you for telling us about that. So on other business, planning board member notes, I just wanna thank Jim and Jen for being here tonight. It was good to get this last public hearing concluded. And I'm gonna miss both you people, both important members of the board. But things happen and people move on. So I just wish both of you the best of luck. as select people on the select board. So, and we may be seeing you at a joint meeting occasionally, so.
Very soon.
Bruce, did you forget to remind them that because they're leaving us, that they have to find their replacements?
Oh, I got two. There's six and three. I'm good.
You got one?
There's six and three.
They're tad underage, but they'll do.
She'll be seven on Saturday. Well, I wanna thank you guys. I have learned so much as a, as a citizen, as an official, as everything. And it's been great and a lot of that is because of you guys. And yet you will see me again, cause maybe I'll be in one of those seats next time. But, but this has been fantastic.
Well, thank you.
I just wanna thank everybody. It's been a great six-plus years. I'd like to thank my past town planners, Jack, Marlene, Stephen, and now Jim. I really enjoyed working for everybody. I've learned a lot. Obviously, past board members, Rosemary and Will, who's just here a little while. And then Bruce, been with me since day one, since I came on board. Kevin, the same. Jen as well. Learned a lot just by listening to everybody ask questions. I mean, when you come on this board, we don't know everything. And I've been talking, I learned a little bit about it, it's just a little apprehensive. And I said, don't worry about it. You have a great team. Just listen to the questions I ask and that's how we all learn. You'll do great and Jack will do a great job as well. And the biggest thing, like I said, if you just, just listen, there's no such thing as a stupid question. You're back in school again, because everybody's probably thinking that same thing. You saw it on the site visit, you know, just, you know.
Big shoes to fill here.
I don't know.
Both of you.
But no, I just, seriously, I wanna thank everybody for the time it was. Definitely exciting. And Jen and I both have some fun times ahead of us.
Did you write a speech there citing everyone else?
I draw it down some.
You totally.
So I wouldn't forget everybody, because, you know, unfortunately, I went through some few town planners.
See, I was gonna say it, but Jen did.
Who was that fifth name you mentioned?
So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Jim. All right, any other planning board member notes? Anybody else like to say anything? Seeing none?
I'm having fun so far.
Planning director notes?
I have nothing.
All right, so we have the minutes of April twenty-eighth. So we have three sets of minutes. April, and they were, they're in our package. It'd be good for us to, to get these done. I hope Jen's had time to look at these.
They all looked great.
Okay, so let's vote on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and Jim's second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Minutes of May twelfth, twenty twenty.
All right, I'll keep going. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May twelfth, twenty twenty.
And I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May twenty-sixth.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
Second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I don't think you've made so many motions in a meeting before, Jen.
Going up big.
All right, our next meeting date, we have, oh gee, Jim's got all of them. But our next one will be six twenty, so it'll be the twenty-third of this month. So we have, we'll go through these, six twenty-three, seven fourteen, seven twenty-eight, eight eleven, and eight twenty-five. But our next would be six twenty-three. So let's attain a motion for adjournment.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion. Here a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you.